adjourn to executive session pursuant to RCW 42. subsection i and we're discussing potential litigation. so we will be one hour, we will be back at seven.
and Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify, it's both potential and pending.
pardon?
it's both potential and pending litigation.
both potential and pending litigation and will action be taken?
no final action.
no final action will be taken. so I'll see you all in executive session.
All right, I see we're back. I extended for five minutes, so if you want, you've got three minutes.
I'm supposed to be going to the city council meeting, right?
Yeah, you're here.
Oh, is this the city council, right? Oh, cool. Okay, thank you, thank you, sir.
City attorney?
Yes.
Is there any resulting action?
No.
Thank you. All right. City clerk, are you ready to go?
We are.
So Kenmore City Council is back in session, we are out of executive session. No formal action will be taken. And will the clerk please now call the roll?
Councilmember Shrubnik. Here. Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember O'Kane.
Here.
Councilmember File.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
Councilmember Kugler.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Will you now please join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. Next item on the agenda is a presentation from King County North Link Connections and Mobility Project with a guest, local government relations and partnership lead Lauren Craig and project manager for North Link Connection, David Vander Zee.
Good evening, Mayor Baker and members of the city council. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce Dave Vander Zee, who works for King County Metro and as the mayor stated, is the project manager for the North Link Connections Mobility Project. Quite a mouthful. Anyway, Metro is redesigning several routes in response to the opening later this year of the linked light rail to Northgate. Metro is proposing changes, many changes in North King County, including some along the SR 522 corridor. Those changes, if approved by the King County Council, would go into effect at the time the light rail opens. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Vander Zee and he can give his presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you for having us this evening. Really appreciate the opportunity to be here in front of the Kenmore City Council. So I'm going to attempt to share my screen to give a presentation here, so just give me one moment. Okay, I should have, there should be a title slide, North Link Connections Mobility Project on the screen.
Yes.
Great, perfect, thanks, Mayor. So yeah, I'm gonna walk through just a little bit about what the Northern Connections Mobility Project is, what some of the potential impacts would be in the city of Kenmore, and just a little bit about sort of our process and sort of where we are. So just to kind of start off, what the project is. The project is basically around these three new light rail stations that are opening in the fall of 2021. So there's the station at the U District, Roosevelt and Northgate. This is essentially a major bus service restructure, so a redesign of the service network in this area along the order of magnitude of what was done similar in 2016 when light rail was extended to the Husky Stadium Station. So we kind of formed this project around three main goals, and a way that I like to frame these goals is sort of that bottom bullet point is the what of what we're doing. So deliver integrated service that responds to link expansion and meets customer needs. The why of what we're doing is really that top bullet point, so improving mobility for historically underserved populations. And the how is really that middle one, so equitably informing, engaging and empowering current and potential customers traveling in the project area. So a little bit about where we are in this process and what we've been kind of setting out to do is that this project actually began in the summer of 2019. So we really began with the first phase of engagement where we did a general needs assessment, tried to understand how folks were using the service, you know, at the time. Then we took that information and we developed an initial set of concepts. And so we worked to develop those concepts. And so we worked to develop those concepts and then began, took those concepts out in a second phase of engagement that began at the very beginning of 2020, so almost a year ago. And as you can see maybe from this chart is that our second phase of public engagement really changed pretty dramatically towards the end of that, that engagement phase with the, the stay home order and the impacts of the pandemic. So we, you know, started out being able to attend public meetings and be out in the community. And we really had to shift to a virtual environment and really pivot to our online tools very quickly in March of 2020. So we did from there was essentially, we took those, those concepts that we developed, we refined them over the summer of 2020 and brought them back out to the public in the fall of 2020 and this time much more prepared for a virtual engagement and online engagement. So we did a number of things, including a, a large virtual town hall that was hosted by Councilmember Dabowski and a number of other council members. And we, we did a number of other virtual events to really share these, these refined proposals. What that had led us to at the end of the year was to, to really sharpen our pencils and refine these once more to turn them into essentially a recommendation that will go to the King County Council later this year. So where we are right now is in that sort of last bar on the chart, which is the King County Council process. So we're working on developing that recommendation. Ultimately, a final recommendation will go to the King County Council in the spring, around early March of this year. And the council will weigh in and deliberate on the proposal. And ultimately, whatever the final proposal that's agreed upon by the council would be approved in April of, of this year. And then from that point on, it really leads us to that implementation in the fall of 2021, aligning with the opening of link light rail. So just a bit about how we shaped the proposal. So this proposal is really just a result of our engagement with the community. So we focused largely on building those relationships with historically un- and underserved populations. We formed a project mobility board. So our mobility board was really our community driven steering committee that helped Metro and helped the planners really form these concepts to use through the feedback that we were hearing and represented a wide cross section of folks demographically, but also geographically across the project area. And so really work to refine these, these, these service concepts. And again, also working with a number of other stakeholders as well, including the city of Kenmore with our partner review board. So we had a number of other partner stakeholders in the project area. And so we really worked to shape these into a proposal that could, that could be implemented later this year. So a few key themes that were really coming out of these phases of engagement, and again, that really shaped a number of these concepts. I'll run through this quickly. Thinking about what we were hearing and what those concepts looked like, would look like, we focused on these themes. So first, transfers should be between frequent services where possible, especially during the midday, night and weekends. So really thinking about what those connections look like. The second one, improve transit connections to and from major community assets and important destinations. So thinking about hospitals, urban centers, universities, and so how are we making those connections better? The third one really had to deal with reliability. So how are we providing fast, reliable bus connections to link light rail? So thinking about those travel times and making those travel times better, as good as or better than they are today. You know, knowing that light rail is bringing in this new, very fast, reliable service. And how do we leverage that reliability in our service design? Another thing that we heard about was improving east, west and crosstown connections. So thinking about how people are traveling east to west, we know there's a lot of good north, south connectivity with light rail. But how are those east connects, east to west connections being made? The next theme that we heard was reliable service all day, especially the busiest times of day. So again, really trying to leverage the benefit that link can provide during those busiest times of day. And then the last one we really heard about was less about the service design, but really thinking about the, the environment in which, you know, transfers and connections are being made. So provide transit connections that are safe, convenient and easy to understand for all riders. So really thinking about what does it look like once a rider steps off the bus and onto the curb and onto a train platform or to another bus stop making a connection. So really thinking about that sort of physical built environment about that transfer experience. So the next piece I'm gonna walk through is just walking through, there's a, there's a about forty different impacted routes throughout North King County and in North Seattle. And so I'm not going to go through every single proposed change, but I'm going to try and focus on some changes that are in the proposal specific to the city of Kenmore. So a number of those are in the SR 522 corridor. So I'm just gonna walk through those quickly. And then I think there will be some time at the end of the presentation for a few questions. So I'm gonna start out with just sort of a bit of an overview. Here we are of kind of the, the segment of the, of the service area that would be affected. Sort of again, in this 522 quarter, and I'm gonna start talking, start out talking about two key routes. Those two routes are a brand new to the system or they would be brand new to the system if approved. And those are routes 322 and 361. So the 322 and 361 replace existing services in the corridor. So there's a couple routes that exist in the SR 522 corridor today. Those specific routes are the 308, the 309 and the 312. And so those routes essentially get replaced by these new routes, 322 and 361. And the changes that we see in this proposal with these two routes is that you have a route 322 that would essentially start in, in Kenmore, at the Kenmore Park and Ride, and then also make a connection to the light rail station in Roosevelt. So it would follow the SR 522 corridor, connect with the Roosevelt Lake Light Rail Station, but then would continue onward downtown and serve the First Hill area. So again, reflecting on the theme of making sure we're providing connections to job centers and hospitals and medical services, making sure that we're providing both a connection to link, giving folks an opportunity to transfer to light rail if they're connecting to the kind of core of downtown, but also still providing a direct bus ride to, to First Hill and those employers. Similarly, we have a route 361 also would start in Kenmore, at the Kenmore Park and Ride and serve the 522 corridor. And that, that route would actually, rather than go to the Roosevelt Station, that route would go to the North Gate Light Rail Station. So, and from the North Gate Light Rail Station, riders could have an opportunity to connect with link there. Again, if they are transferring and continuing on to the core of downtown. There's also a number of other routes that we, that would connect at North Gate. So North Gate today is already a major hub and it's going to continue to be a major hub in the future. But the 361 from North Gate would then also continue on to downtown, specifically serving South Lake Union. And so some of the things that we heard during our engagement was that folks really wanted to still have these direct connections, certainly to these areas that are not directly served by our light rail. So we know light rail serves the core of downtown very well, but areas like First Hill and South Lake Union, we still wanted to make sure we were providing those direct bus connections and providing that direct travel time. I'll note that these changes are also in conjunction with changes to the sound transit route 522 that their board has already approved. And what that changes essentially is to the sound transit route 522, they would shorten that route to begin and end at the Roosevelt Light Rail Station and also improve the frequency of that route, in particular during the midday and on weekends. And so, but what that means during the rush hour with these new metro routes on weekdays and the, the sound transit route is, you know, essentially in the 522 corridor, you have a bus during the peak hour that's coming about every five minutes, whether that's a metro bus or a sound transit bus. So those would, you know, we would work with them to have a coordinated schedule on that. So. Just a couple of other notes while I'm on the slide about some of the other adjustments in the area. We've made a few other adjustments that connect to the Roosevelt Station. Again, I'm not going to go through all of these, but just wanted to add these a little bit for context. And again, similarly, this is kind of the whole suite of routes that we're looking at. But wanted to point out, again, those two in particular, the 322 and the 361. And again, noting that the 308, 309 and 312 are replaced. One of the route that I will mention that isn't really on the screen here is the route 331. We are adding a couple of additional trips in the peak period in the, on the route 331. So again, looking at some of the other local service that maybe doesn't have a direct connection with link, but we are looking at some of those local connections as well. And so we've added a couple of trips on the 331 in the proposal. And so essentially, that's sort of what the proposal looks like for the, the Kenmore area right now and in the 522 corridor. You know, we've obviously designed this proposal to be, to be compatible with, you know, any, any range of scenarios. And so certainly we did have to make some adaptations in the, in this kind of COVID environment that we find ourselves in. But ultimately, you know, we, we feel confident in the recommendation that it can be delivered and implemented in the fall of 2021. And as I mentioned, at this point, these are proposals. This is the, sort of the proposed recommendation that Metro is working on developing to essentially transmit to, to, to council in the spring. So that's sort of where we are in the proposal phase. Again, the council will weigh in on any additional things or any additional considerations that they bring to the table as part of the council process. But ultimately, a final recommendation will, would be approved by the council in, in April or early May for that implementation aligned with the opening of light rail. So I'll pause there. That's sort of the end of the presentation. Just wanted to go over very quickly where we were in the process and see if there are any other additional questions or comments that I can, that I can answer.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yeah, I'm a, I was a daily bus rider to downtown, taking the 312 or 522. I just want to make sure I heard correctly. I might need to go back to that second to the last slide. But the, the existing buses to First Hill, for example, there will still be a bus that does it and it will make a stop but continue onto First Hill. However, what I didn't hear was for other than the 520, the 312 is going away. And the 522, what I heard you say, and I just want to make sure I understood this correctly, is that it will terminate at the Roosevelt Station. So for the jillions of people that go downtown and have relied on not having to transfer, there is no, there will not be an option to do that. Is that what we're hearing? You will, every single person will have to transfer.
So if you're traveling to the core of downtown, right, so Sound Transit's board has approved changes. They actually, I believe they approved them either in November or December of just this last year. And so the Sound Transit Route 522 will begin and end at the Roosevelt Station. So that's correct. It will terminate at the station. So if you are continuing on to the sort of core of downtown, there will be a transfer involved. And so, you know, one thing that we are working on and that we're working with Sound Transit on as well and the city of Seattle is again, working on what that transfer environment looks like. So making sure that those stops are as close to the, close to the station entrances as possible. So if you are, you know, traveling to the core of downtown, that you can make that, you know, really minimize, I don't, I don't want to say seamless, but minimize the seams of, of what those transfers look like. Again, yes, with the metro routes with the 322 and the 361 in the proposal, is the 322 is the route that would serve the, it would both serve the Roosevelt Station, but then continue onward to her first hill. So there is still a direct bus ride if you're going to the first hill area. But if you are traveling to the core of downtown and were previously taking the 312 or the 522, that would involve a connection.
I just, I just have to say, I think that's not, it really does not serve our community. You will lose ridership. There is no way to make that as seamless as no transfer. I mean, I, it just, there just is not a way to do that. And I, I appreciate the efforts, but this is a, this is a reduction in service for our area.
Understood. Deputy Mayor.
What are the average, or what do you suspect the travel times will be for somebody who's coming from Kenmore and trying to get to downtown compared to current travel times with traffic and everything else? So if they're transferring at Roosevelt, how does that compare against the current, you know, peak AM, peak commute?
Yeah, that's a good question. So yeah, it's, when you say current, right, I think probably pre-COVID is sort of the.
Yeah, that's, sorry, yes, that's, that's what I meant was, yeah.
Sure. You know, we expect the, the travel times to be, to be somewhat similar, but during the peak periods, what we expect to see is a huge increase in reliability. So essentially the predictability of that service. So having those trips arrive more consistently, you know, that is, that is a particular benefit of, of making that connection is that you're gonna see travel times within a much smaller range. But in terms of overall travel time savings, again, it's, it's somewhat similar. You do save a couple of minutes over today. But, you know, as, as I mentioned, the, the travel time difference, while not significant for this corridor, the reliability savings is, is, is pretty significant. And that's harder to quantify in terms of just how to express, there's going to be less variability in that service. So, you know, again, trips can take, you know, if we're seeing sort of typical travel, scheduled travel times, we can see up to 10 minutes variability. And there are even some days where sometimes buses can run even a few minutes ahead of schedule if traffic is really great. But that is less often the case, more often the case we're seeing buses run late. And so, you know, we're look really, we're really trying to leverage that reliability of light rail, providing a more consistent travel time. The other, the reality is when buses are also more on time and transit, it does translate to savings. So when buses are late and they're stuck in traffic, those are basically bus service hours that are, you know, causing a sort of a cascading effect. And so, again, as I mentioned, the travel time difference for this particular corridor is only just a couple of minutes, but the reliability gains are pretty substantial.
Councilmember File.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. Thank you for your presentation today. And, you know, it's a little bit of bittersweet news, right? I, I have to say, I'm very concerned about the reduction in a, a straight ride to Seattle for our community. Not only just our community, but the people who come through this route. I think that there's an unfortunate negative impact that will be felt to persons of differences, whether they're differences of ability, mobility, mental health. And I'm concerned about what that will look like. I believe that the reduction of routes, straight routes to Seattle and beyond will actually have a negative impact on these communities that could actually shrink the world. How do you expect to shift some of that ridership or incorporate support or improve in support with this reduction?
Yeah, so, I mean, there's kind of two things. One is that while the service is not continuing on to downtown for Sound Transit and the, and the Metro Route 312, you know, as I mentioned with Sound Transit's investment, they are adding back service into the midday and to weekends. So, but I, but I do understand that the change in the connection, making the connection at Roosevelt. But what I would say to that is there's kind of two pieces. One, as I mentioned, we're working very close with the city of Seattle, who essentially kind of controls the sidewalks and the right of way around the stations. Also working directly with Sound Transit themselves. You know, as we think about, again, these bus stop locations, stops that are appropriate, just, you know, making sure that we're adding shelters and large enough shelters that, you know, would have weather protection, knowing that these are going to be, you know, higher connection, higher transfer areas. So making sure that those stops can accommodate the, the folks that are, you know, going to be using, making that connection. So again, really looking at how we're minimizing that sort of, that, that transfer from a bus stop to, to the platform. And so, you know, we, we can't make it zero, but we want to try and make it as safe and convenient as possible. So that also includes other things like wayfinding and signage and other things that will help people navigate that transfer environment as well. The other piece then is also less of sort of, there's sort of a, that kind of hardscape piece, but there's also this piece around education and making sure that, you know, leading up to this is going to be, you know, a pretty substantial education camp, campaign to get folks sort of, you know, get that information out and, and giving folks the information they, they need to know how to make a transfer and providing that information. So there's not just sort of an. So there's not just sort of an information on how do we get people from the stop to, to the platform. So there's that kind of wayfinding information, but definitely an education and, you know, campaign. And so, leading up to a major service, you know, change like this, we do expect there to be, you know, a lot of resources around what that, how to make that transfer. And so we do know that's going to take some time, but, you know, again, with the, with the approval of this service change, whatever the final service change is being made in, in May, you know, that really, once we get that approval, that we got, we kind of go full gear into what is that education campaign look like? And how do, how do we get those resources in place for folks who have different abilities and for folks who maybe aren't used to making that connection? So there certainly comes with it a commitment to education and resourcing that, leading up to the service change.
Thank you.
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
I've already got you. Let's go to Councilmember Kugler first.
Yeah, I just thought, Councilmember Kugler.
Hi, Mr. Vander Zee. I have a question about the funding. Is the funding already available for this plan and/or flight variations?
Yeah, that's a good question. That also kind of is a couple of different pieces. Within the plan itself, you know, one thing that has changed is that, at least in the, the portion of the, the service area that is within the city of Seattle, the city of Seattle was investing through their Seattle Transit Benefit District. So Seattle, city of Seattle had a voter-approved measure that expired at the end of 2020. A replacement measure was approved in the end of 2020, but that measure is considerably smaller than their initial package was. So for some of the routes in the project area, you're going to see, you know, less of that, that funding that has come from Seattle, because they simply have a smaller package with which to, you know, essentially replace it with. So, so they are not going to be funding the same level of service that they did. So, you know, we work with them as a partner through a number of these, you know, routes. And on this project in the city of Seattle, looking at sort of the broader picture, sort of outside of the Seattle Transit Benefit District, you know, what we, what we're seeing right now during sort of our, you know, this pandemic response is we're seeing some service that is currently suspended. So we don't know yet how much service will potentially be suspended in September of 2021. So I think that's also sort of a process we're working on. But again, we expect that the, the plan that was essentially shared at this point, you know, we, we, we would have a sort of a full implementation schedule for it. So what I mean is, what that, what I mean to say by that is there could potentially be some suspended service in September of 2021, when this plan is implemented. But again, I would, I would heavily stress that as a suspension, which means that there is sort of a long-term funding for that. And so as we have a recovery process, that service would come back to our kind of fully kind of expected service levels. So again, the piece that really is missing from the overall proposal would be that reduction from the city of Seattle partner funding. But as far as long-term from Metro, you know, we expect to bring back our full level of service, even if we are still kind of in recovery mode in September of 2021. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
How much of this is going to have to get redone once 522 BRT comes on, comes online in a few years? Crossing my fingers, knocking on wood.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. And so, yeah, you can almost think of this as sort of the kind of one in a series of potential sort of, sort of redesigns or updates. And so the process that we began in 2019, where we kind of, as I was describing earlier, doing sort of a needs assessment and then coming out with a couple of different phases of concepts, we're essentially going to be doing that similar process, you know, in advance of the, you know, the Stride BRT corridor in, in, you know, 24, or, you know, essentially when we have a, you know, have a confidence about when that's going to be. And again, similar to that would be the Linwood Link extension. So as Link extends north of North Gate, again, we would expect a similar process to this. And so something that really, we're getting out ahead, you know, a couple of years, two, three years in advance, starting to talk with the community. And in many ways, we hope it's kind of just a continuation of the conversations that we're having now. So I think that was, you know, some of that's been important to us in this project is how do we form these relationships? Because we know they're going to be long-term relationships. And so as we revisit parts of this network in the next few years, we want to build off of those relationships and build off of those conversations. What that looks like from a service design perspective is that, you know, some of these routes that are in this scope will also then be kind of folded into the scope of the future projects. So if you imagine a bit of a Venn diagram, there's, there's some overlap between, between this area and where the, the SR 522 BRT project area will, will be. So we do expect to be talking to some of the same riders and talking about some of the same routes. And so, but again, it would be through a similar process where we're out there, you know, a couple of years in advance. And certainly by then, hopefully, we're able to re-engage in person and re-engage, you know, in, in other means or means in addition to the online tools that we've developed. And, but also kind of return to some of the other conventional things of, of being in person by, by that service restructure.
The Councilmember Shrebnik.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't ask this earlier. So during the AM peak, and again, this is pre-COVID, so nobody knows what it's going to look like after, but pre-COVID, during AM peak, both the 522 and the 312 were standing room by Lake City, if not Lake Forest Park. And during that period between the two of them, they come at about an average of every eight minutes. So we're talking about that level of volume hitting the Roosevelt Station every eight minutes. So are you, you're saying that you believe that there will be capacity for that?
Yes. So we do believe that, you know, looking at Sound Transit's frequencies, think that there will be adequate capacity to, to have folks making that connection. One thing I will note is, again, there are some folks who may elect to take the 361, which was the route that goes to North Gate. So they may be able to make that connection at North Gate as well. And that actually may save them a couple of minutes from traveling down to Roosevelt. So that 361 kind of does two things. It connects to the North Gate Station, but then that route continues on to South Lake Union. So if your destination's in South Lake Union, you can stay on the bus. But if your destination is downtown, you may also elect to do, to make that connection at North Gate, where you're getting out at the very beginning of the route.
That was my concern on Sound Transit also, because the capacity. Once North Gate opens up, I anticipate a large number of people will be boarding at North Gate. So I'm wondering, is it standing room when it gets to the next stop, which is Roosevelt? But that option then with the 361 of going to North Gate directly and getting on at the beginning is another option, but I have been assured there will be room, there will be space available at Roosevelt. Any other questions? Thank you.
Well, Mayor, thanks for having us tonight. We really appreciate it. We really appreciate the opportunity to speak to the council. And yeah, we, we really look forward to a continued relationship and happy to come back anytime.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item then on the agenda is a public comment. But before I go to that, I am going to be writing a letter in support of Metro's action to try and improve things here on, in Kenmore, and certainly here on the northeast part of the county. I was very upset with the fact that 522 was going away. So I do understand your position, Deborah, because I used to take that bus all the time down to my meetings too. I think we even saw each other on the bus one day. But it, it, taking a look at what's happening right now today and what's for the foreseeable future, ridership is really down. And it really makes much more sense to take passengers to North Gate and Roosevelt. It's not ideal. I know it's not. And my argument all the way, all along has been it doesn't take you exactly where 522 used to take you. So I do understand that. But in the same sense, I think that we need to support Metro and their efforts, especially with the county council. And I like the fact that we now have two routes that will take us to First Hill and will take us to South Lake Union, where we haven't really been able to go easily before. So, and don't forget, 145th is going to be opening up and we're going to have bus rapid transit right to there. So anyway, and, and if there's no objections, I will sign that letter for Metro. All right. Yes, thank you very much. All right. Next.
I would just recommend that there's a transition phase where they, where they keep the 312 for, you know, a year or something.
And you know, I, I, I really tried for that. I, I didn't think it was fair to get rid of the 522, that there ought to be a transition phase. So we knew how, how 145th Street was going to, going to act. But given the ridership now and the ridership in COVID, which is going to continue, many people say for a little while longer, it's kind of hard to justify the added expense when we are looking, because of monetary reasons, to cut projects and reduce and extend projects. So there's a lot of balls being juggled right now. And so I'm with you on 522. I'm really with you on that. And we'll continue.
522, my, my, I just want to be clear. So this was Metro. So the 312 is Metro. So that's the.
522 is me. I don't have control of the 312.
Have a transition six months or a year, so we could see how that works. 522 is going away. We knew that. So it's, yeah, it's, it's Metro, you know, bringing up this.
And I will certainly, I will certainly continue that. I have other sources into the RTC that will help with that one. So. All right. Next item on the agenda is a public comment. Clerk.
We want to welcome our community members to the council's meeting. In this forum, the council cannot engage or dialogue with the public. The primary role of the council is to listen. All comments must be addressed to the mayor and the city council. Please use the raise hand feature now if you wish to speak. The clerk will acknowledge your request and I will call your name when it's your turn. Your time will start when we confirm that we can hear you. Please state your name, city of residence for the record, and keep your comments to the allotted time. Your time cannot be granted to another and your clock time will not be reset unless there are extenuating circumstances and the presiding officer has expressly allowed it. Screen sharing is not allowed. You can submit materials to the council or clerk in advance. This meeting is being recorded. Thank you for taking the time to express your comments. I will now proceed with the order. We're going to begin with the following individuals who have their hands raised in this order. Tracy Benasinski, John Peoples, and David Morton. Tracy, can you hear us? Tracy. Sorry, I think I was muted. Can you hear you? Okay, awesome. Tracy Benasinski, Kenmore. Thank you, Mayor Baker and city council members for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. I am here to advocate for the reimbursement of the plastic bag ban in Kenmore, not dependent on the timeline for the statewide ban under consideration in the legislature right now. I would first like to commend the city of Kenmore for its response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Being as close to the epicenter of the original outbreak as we were, things could have been so much worse for our community if not for the swiftness of your action and your ongoing responsible evidence-based leadership. Thank you for keeping city staff and residents safe during this time. It made sense to me in the early days of the pandemic to lift the plastic bag ban, even if only for the feeling of security and safety of afforded grocery store workers and shoppers alike. I do not want to solucite, however, of the severity of the problems single-use plastic products pose for our environment and climate. At least eight million tons of plastic end up in our oceans every year and make up 80% of all marine debris from surface waters to deep sea sediments. That's like dumping one garbage truck full of plastic into the ocean every minute of every day for an entire year. Marine species ingest or entangle by plastic debris, which causes severe injuries and death. Plastic pollution threatens food safety and quality, human health, coastal tourism, and contributes to climate change. On plastic bag bans and COVID-19 from the Washington State Department of Ecology website, early in the pandemic, claims circulated that single-use plastics like plastic bags were safer than reusable items. However, studies and guidance from the Centers for Disease Control, the Washington Department of Health, and other medical researchers do not support this claim. They indicate COVID-19 is not more likely to be spread on surfaces like reusable bags than on plastic bags. To be safe, many businesses in the 39 Washington cities and counties that already have plastic bag bans have suspended their bans and stopped allowing customers to bring their own reusable bags until more information became available. Some businesses have retained this policy and others have returned to allowing customers to use their reusable shopping bags. Indeed, in the past two months, I have shopped at QFCs in Seattle and Bothell, Trader Joe's in Shoreline and Kirkland, and Safeway in Kenmore. All are now allowing reusable bags in their stores. And there are options for stores uncomfortable with reusable bags as we ride out the pandemic, paper bags and cardboard boxes. I know no one wants to see an ocean swimming with plastics. I know we all care about public health and safety. Now that more information is available, I think we can keep our community safe from COVID-19 without sending more plastic bags into the waste stream. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Benasinski.
Mr. Peoples.
Yes, John Peoples, Kenmore. Good evening, city council and Kenmore neighbors. I'd like to start by restating my objection to the diversity, equity, and inclusion training and ask that no municipal employee be subjected to it. No doubt, you all mean well, but it simply is not what you think. And some of the materials do not provide a full and honest opportunity to discuss cultural or race relations in Kenmore. Of the materials I've reviewed, the one easiest to call out for its harmful effects is the so-called Pyramid of White Supremacy. For the following reasons, I respectfully ask that the city council and mayor discontinue its use in any city programs. The diagram is an opinion piece, not a work of scholarly rigor. It is a cartoon and has no place in a civic environment that seeks true cultural understanding. It deceitfully associates innocuous and innocent phrases and aspirations with wicked ones. The purpose of this deceitful association is to restrict other's speech and take from them their ability to participate in the conversation. Odd for a tool and a program supposedly designed to encourage people to talk. Phrases and ideas such as bootstrap theory, two sides to every story, fun school locally, not all fill-in-the-blank people, and we all belong to the human race are part of many people's ordinary vocabularies and rhetorical toolboxes and are all normal ways to express oneself. By listing these phrases as stepping stones to or bricks holding up some nefarious pinnacle, the authors of this opinion piece seek to trick people into remaining silent out of fear of causing offense. The pyramid is designed to stoke fear into people. By taking the pyramid's opinions as gospel or scholarly truth, people are tricked into thinking ill of those who innocently use certain innocuous phraseology to state their case or otherwise participate in a civil conversation. The pyramid fails to define what is meant by the phrases and concepted names, and thus people are left guessing, not a condition conducive to understanding one another. On its surface, the pyramid is aimed at people of one particular race and inherently racist piece of work that has no place in a civic conversation, let alone saved on our municipal servers at our expense. It doesn't take a genius to figure out that if people of one skin color can be targeted today, those of a different skin color can be targeted tomorrow. It's as if the creators of the pyramid were actually promoting racial targeting. Lastly, in general, the pyramid fails to promote harmony or aspirations, but rather quashes them with fear. So please delete this racist opinion piece and ensure that it does not get used in any further municipal activities. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Mr. Morton. Mr. David Morton.
There we go. Is it my turn now?
We can hear you.
Okay. Uh, good evening, council members. I'm David Morton. I live near Redmond. No one wants to eat food that will make you sick. The FDA and the USDA investigate instances of toxic and carcinogenic chemicals getting into our food. If a local restaurant is unsafe or unsanitary, then public health, Seattle and King County, might close it. We want to know that our food is safe to eat and won't make us sick. Likewise, no one wants to drink poisoned water. Our drinking water is constantly monitored for bacteria, parasites, and toxic chemicals. Kenmore's drinking water meets or exceeds all EPA and Washington State Department of Health drinking water regulations. We want to know that our water is safe too. And no one wants to breathe air that will make you sick. But who is monitoring the quality of the air we breathe? And what kinds of things are monitored in our precious air? What level of priority has been given to the purity of our air? The air quality monitoring station closest to Kenmore is at Lake Forest Park Town Center. It's operated by the Washington State Department of Ecology. The station monitors only particulate matter and visibility. The US or FDA, USDA, and teams of health inspectors are watching our food supply. The EPA and the Department of Health ensure that we have safe drinking water. But essentially, no one is monitoring the purity of the air we breathe. In fact, it appears that our atmosphere has become the preferred dumping grounds for toxic waste that can't be disposed of on land or water. People who are aware of a significant odor issue in Kenmore near the Cadman asphalt plant may be unaware that the stench is caused by toxic and carcinogenic volatile organic chemicals, or VOCs, and polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, or PAHs. Every year, asphalt plants like Cadman pour thousands of tons of VOCs into the air we breathe. Cadman is not required to test their emissions for toxic and carcinogenic VOCs and PAHs. While these hazardous air pollutants are pouring out of the asphalt plant, pedestrians and bicyclists pass right by on Burke-Gilman Trail. Lots of employees are working nearby and breathing the fumes. Nearby residents have reported being overwhelmed by asphalt fumes. We protect our food and water. Why don't we protect our air? Thank you.
Elizabeth Mooney.
Hi, can you? I don't, I'm, can you see me? No, not yet.
No, we don't see you, but we hear you.
Oh, I don't understand what's going on. Well, okay. My name is Elizabeth Mooney and I live in Kenmore. I support what Dr. David Morton said and also what Tracy Banazinski said. I'm president of People for Environmentally Responsible Kenmore and part of the Kenmore Clean Air Coalition. With the new administration and the COVID vaccine coming, there is much change in the air. But I'm here on behalf of the Kenmore citizens who do not detect a change in the air, namely those who are still subject to emissions from the Cadman plant. Please, City Council, do not let them be forgotten. Would it be possible for the city hall phone number, the four-two-five-three-nine-eight-eight-nine-zero-zero, to include in it a clear and early prompt for an odor complaint line to leave a voice message? That would be very helpful to have a specific prompt to enable not only citizens, but our visitors to log into our city if there are any concerns that come from that stationary source at the Cadman plant. For citizens to hear a specific prompt and guidance on what to do in leaving a voice message, I think that would be very helpful. We need to make it much easier for citizens to get their message to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Rose H.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Rose Hendricks. I live in Kenmore. I just wanted to take a minute to say that I appreciated council members pushing back on the ending of the 522 and 312 bus services. I also wrote that line as an everyday commute pretty much from end to end, pre-pandemic. And you know, the reality is that a transfer is, it's added friction, it's added time, it's added blocking. The escalators break down on the link constantly, like it, it's non-trivial and it is a reduction in service and I appreciate you pushing back on that. Um, I understand that we're subject to the realities of the metro budget and all of those other considerations, but it's non-trivial. I appreciate it. I see the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hendricks.
Mayor Baker, I see no further hands raised.
Anybody else? Anybody else out there want to participate in the, in public comment? All right, I declare the public comment period closed. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
And I will second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is business agenda. Two thousand twenty-one Planning Commission Docket Work Programs, presented by city principal planner, Ms. Lori Anderson. Welcome back.
Well, thank you. Good evening again. So before you tonight is the two thousand twenty-one annual Planning Commission Docket for your review and approval. As you know, the docket is the Planning Commission's work program for the year. Although there's an opportunity in the fall for private requests for consideration of comprehensive plan and development regulation amendments, we did not receive any requests this year for the two thousand twenty-one docket. And staff is recommending two major projects for the commission in two thousand twenty-one. It's likely that one or both of these will extend into two thousand twenty-two. So the first item on the recommended docket is the major step in the state mandated two thousand twenty-four comprehensive plan update. We would begin the update with a review of the twenty-year vision statement in the plan and then consider the land use and housing elements, including consideration of an expansion of the city's transit-oriented development district. In October, this past October, the Puget Sound Regional Council adopted Vision 2050. Those are the multi-county planning policies that, that Kenmore must be consistent with. Fall, Vision 2050 identifies Kenmore as a high-capacity transit or HCT community with expectations for new job and housing growth to support bus rapid transit on SR five-two-two. With the multi-county planning policies in place now, countywide planning policies, or CPPs, consistent with Vision 2050, must be adopted to further guide Kenmore's efforts. In King County, revisions to the CPPs are underway and are expected in the summer of two thousand twenty-one. A public review draft, draft is anticipated in March. After adoption, ratification is to follow by all the King County cities. The CPPs include housing and growth job targets. And they also include affordable housing expectations. So we've been working on land capacity analyses and a number of other things over the past year. So it would certainly be timely to start our land use and housing element reviews. In two thousand twenty-one, for this project, help would be used to develop a public participation plan and conduct a statistically valid community survey to inform the vision statement. A particular interest will be connecting with historically disadvantaged communities in Kenmore. The second major project recommended for the docket is evaluation of opportunities for missing middle housing in Kenmore. As you may recall, we held a developer panel in the fall of two thousand nineteen to offer insights into this type of housing in conjunction with the Housing Strategy Plan, which lists this as a potential affordable housing strategy. Missing middle housing refers to housing units that are mid-density options between single-family detached homes and mid-rise apartments. Proponents would say that they are, that it is gentle density and gentle infill, compatible in scale and character with detached, single-family homes while increasing density. So with the pandemic disruption of the Planning Commission's work, this item, even though it was on their two thousand twenty docket, was not brought forward. Incorporating this project into the evaluation of the vision statement and review of the housing element is very appropriate, as is consideration of mixed-use development at intersection properties, an idea brought forward by the city council at your January retreat. The third project on the docket is an update to the capital facilities element. This is necessitated by some changes in the city's surface water program and is not expected to be a significant workload item. So with that, staff would recommend that you move to adopt the two thousand twenty-one docket, but I am certainly here to answer questions.
Questions. Councilmember Shrubnik.
All right, I seem to have a lot of questions tonight. So Ms. Anderson, it's good to see you. Thank you for the report. Thank you for the great work on the docket. So I have one question about the CPP and that is to, I, I mean, I, you know, I know a couple of us are on committees where we're trying to comment independently with SCA and just kind of wondering, how do we get like your best thoughts about that? So that's one question, but specifically for the docket. I'm wondering if either or both of the MFTE or TOD expansion ideas could be somehow shoehorned in. Those just seem so relevant and they're, I think they're not, they're considered large, they were considered medium or small. They're so relevant for bolstering development in our, in our areas that we want high-quality development and we're struggling.
Right. So I have a couple of thoughts about that and then I'll go back to your first question. And the consideration of expansion or location of the TOD would definitely be part of the land use element review. It does make total sense. And it would be particularly relevant, given our new HCT, High Capacity Transit Community designation. MFTE is actually not a comprehensive plan issue. It's a development regulation. And so logically, a discussion of that certainly could follow a comprehensive plan direction, but I would not anticipate that taking up MFTE would be part of the comprehensive plan update project. So with that, I would go back to your first question. The CPPs, yes. I know that there are drafts beginning to come out and staff is certainly following those. And I noted that you had forwarded some comments to us for review, which in your role on the GMPC, so we will be looking at those. And so I anticipate that sometime this spring, I don't know whether we'll wait until the public review draft comes out, but I anticipate that we would be bringing forward information to the council on the draft policies and certainly the target, housing and job target information for council review and input. So I hope that answered your questions.
Yeah, just, and just as a point of clarification, I mean, the GMPC put on those elements that I forwarded is, is actually this week. So, yeah.
Right. And, and Debbie, even though she's on vacation, has forwarded her comments to me. And I, I too will be looking at that. And Deputy Mayor Herbig was on the Sound Cities Association Caucus today for the Affordable Housing Committee, where they are reviewing the, the housing, the draft housing community or CPPs. So a lot of involvement here.
I have found over the years, Mrs. Anderson is an extremely valuable resource. Very knowledgeable in the area. When I was serving as co-chair on the King County Affordable Housing Task Force, I, I had tons of questions for her and I convinced her to take the staff position at the committee that Nigel is now on. And it's, yeah, she is a true asset for this community. And I'm glad you're, you're calling on her talents. Any other questions? So if there are none, the chair will entertain a motion for council authorize the Planning Commission's two thousand and twenty-one docket.
I'm moved. Oh, second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Kugler?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember File?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Kane?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik? Is that a yes?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is staff report. Mr. City Manager.
Hi, everybody. How you doing?
Great.
Only eight oh nine, eight, eight oh eight.
I don't know. That does not give you free rein.
Um, so, so a couple of years ago, a few years ago, you adopted an ordinance that bans the use of plastic bags in grocery stores. Last year, when the pandemic was happening, we, along with a bunch of other cities, temporarily passed emergency orders that rescinded the plastic bag bans during the pandemic. Cities like Lake Forest Park and Bothell did what we did. They rescinded the, the ordinances temporarily during the pandemic. Kirkland actually didn't rescind their ordinance. They just stopped enforcing and they told the community and the grocery stores and their council that they just were not going to enforce during the pandemic. So I was thinking to just, you know, follow the state's lead. You know, I thought that the plastic bag ban statewide was going to go into effect in, on January first and then that would have just made our situation a moot point because of the, the statewide law would have, you know, taken precedent over ours. But then the governor delayed the implementation of the statewide ban on plastic bags. And looks like through, at least through June into July, and I think there's a, a bill in the state legislature that would authorize it to be implemented in, implemented in two thousand twenty-two. So with no statewide ban, that leaves the question, what do we do with ours? Do we go ahead and let the emergency proclamation stand for now? Or do we take, take away the emergency proclamation and let the ordinance go back into effect? I, this, just this last week, I checked with our next-door neighbor cities, Lake Forest Park, Kirkland and Bothell. And Kirk, Bothell and Lake Forest Park continue to have their ordinance rescinded, meaning they are allowing plastic bags. And Kirkland continues to not enforce their, their ordinance on plastic bags. So our neighboring cities are continuing to not require plastic bags or what? The neighboring cities have continued to rescind their ordinances on plastic bags and therefore allow them. And then I also called the Safeway manager and got his thoughts. And he said that there is still, there still are supplying, supply chain issues with paper bags and that the, that having people bring in reusable bags is problematic from a health standpoint and. health standpoint and just logistics standpoint right now. So his recommendation is to keep the lift of the ban in place. So that's my report back to you. I would love some direction.
Deputy Mayor?
Couple of things. One, the bill that you're referring to, 1053, is still going through the process, and part of what that bill does is it, the bill that was passed last year for the statewide bag ban was going to preempt any of the local bills that have, any local laws have been passed, so it's uniform across the state. That part of the bill, as far as I know, has not been waived through emergency order. So I'm not sure if we actually can revert back to our own this second. Because I, at least in the bill I'm looking at, 1053, that's going through the process right now. Part of what that bill does is it delays the preemption clause of last year's bill. So I'm not a lawyer, but I can't imagine that they would be doing that if the preemption clause wasn't in effect already as of the first of the year. So I think that's something that we need to look at and have a solid grasp on, because I don't know if, I believe the state law that was passed last year does preempt us, and we need to figure out that's actually in effect or not. Two, you know, when we originally agreed to waiving the plastic bag ban, we did so because at the time, there was a huge focus on surfaces, and we thought that surfaces were a big nexus for spreading COVID. You know, in the last nine months, year, we've discovered that's not truly the case. It's really more of an aerosol issue and not so much a surfaces issue. So I think our reasoning for originally passing the ban has, has frankly become moot. And I don't see any reason why we don't get back to not, you know, why we don't get back to the bag ban as quickly as we legally can.
Councilmember O'Kane?
If, if at all possible, I think it's incredibly important that we reinstate the bag ban. It's our responsibility to care for our environment. There are small things that we can do. Limiting the bag, the plastic bag ban, I mean, bag use in our community is incredibly important and easy for us to do. I just returned from the Oregon coast, and I have to say, it was incredibly heartbreaking to see the bits of plastic on the, on the sand. Bits of plastic washed in with the foam. It's us. We're responsible for it. We do not need to give it out to the plastic industry to continue the single-use waste. I recommend, look, there's an artist, his name's Chris Jordan. He has a piece called Midway that shows the plastic that kills the beautiful great albatross and their babies. And they disintegrate with plastic in their bellies. There is too much waste in our culture, and the reasoning behind the plastic bag ban has been found not to be scientific. We can bring bags, and I, like Ms. Banaschinsky, have been shopping in stores outside of Kenmore, where they welcome plastic bags. And I encourage each and every one of us to use plastic bags. It is our responsibility. It is our planet. And I will share this. I have been receiving emails from Inglemore High School students over the past weeks, several, speaking about waste. Their concerns about waste and that we can be doing something about it. We need to be leaders. Absolutely. It is our choice to lead here. It is our planet. It's falling apart on our watch. This is small, simple, and something we can do, especially if it's legal. Thank you.
Councilmember File?
Thank you, Mayor Baker. I would be comfortable making a motion that return to our plastic bag ban within a sixty, with a 60-day notice to our surrounding agencies. I believe we can do this, and I would hope for your support.
Councilmember Marshall?
I had a question as to whether labor had weighed in yet, and whether the grocery workers, the people on the front lines, how they felt about it, and whether their voice is being heard here.
Nigel, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe labor is opposed to lifting the bans right now.
I'm not a hundred percent certain. I tried to reach out to some folks and kind of hit a brick wall, so.
And I've talked to some, and that's, that's what I'm hearing. So, but anyway. Any other questions? Any other comments? Yes, Councilmember Kugler?
I am feeling similarly as Councilmember O'Kane in that I think we need to be aggressive about our decisions that environment. I think most cities tend to put that on the back burner, and, and it's easy to do that because it doesn't seem as immediate or imminent, but we have an opportunity to really make the right choice and be a leader in these types of decisions. At the same time, I think we can't make decisions that might have an inordinate impact on certain businesses or people in our community. So I really like Councilmember File's proposal as well to give a 60-day notice so that businesses can prepare. We need to do our due diligence and make sure that the bill that Deputy Mayor Herbig brought up is is followed or that we understand how that impacts our decisions. But I think in general, we should be more aggressive about our decisions related to the environment.
All right. City Attorney, are you there?
I am.
Can you check on the legality that the Deputy Mayor was speaking about?
Yes, I, I'm not, and I apologize, I'm not familiar with the bill, 1053 that you mentioned, Deputy Mayor. But I would like to look at that because I agree that would lend support the proclamation, or at least the emergency extension that I'm reading right now from the governor does only apply to O2O and O2, I'm sorry, of the statute. And O2O is simply says you can't give out a plastic bag. But it didn't extend to the other provisions. And the reason I'm saying that is O5O later on is the actual preemption. And so there is a good argument that the preemption is in effect. But a couple, I do want to read that bill. I, I'm not familiar with it, and then work with Rob on what we can do under the actual effective legislation.
And for what it's worth, it's scooting along through the process faster than most other bills right now. It's already in, it's already qualified to go on the, on the floor for a full vote, so it's not getting hung up anywhere. So there's a good chance that maybe it goes through and gets signed by the governor, and we don't have to worry about the preemption side of things. I don't know.
And that was House Bill?
Yeah, House Bill, 1053.
Thanks.
I, I think that there's certainly enough interest in, in removing this ban on our council, but I would like to confirm the legality of it and have the city manager get back to us as, as soon as he knows, so that we could, we could take ad, action. Councilmember O'Kane?
And I, and I just, I have a process question. I know that us lifting the bag ban, it, we didn't have a say in that. It just, we, we, the city decided that. Is that going to require a council motion to reinstate the ban if it is something that we can do, say, within the 60 days that Councilmember File suggested, which I support?
Mr. City Manager? If the city attorney says that we can reinstitute the ban, is that something you can do on your own, or you need to bring that in front of us?
So, so there's two parts to it, actually. In the proclamation, it used to follow a date, but now it simply says that it will expire upon the city manager determining that the emergency is over and that the rule is no longer necessary. So I think it would be good to have two steps. First of all, the manager rescinding the proclamation, and because this council has actually ratified it on every amendment, I think that's at least three times it's been before you. It should also, you should also ratify that action.
But initially, he can, he can declare the emergency over, and then we can vote on it in a future meeting.
I don't know if he's going to declare the emergency over. Instead, he could just simply rescind the
He can rescind it, and then we can vote on it.
Yeah, you can ratify it later, correct?
Right, okay.
Again, that you can do that, correct, correct.
It'll get instituted faster that way. Councilmember File?
Thank you, Mayor Baker. So a couple clarifying questions. Can't we call upon our city manager to rescind the plastic band ban? I, I believe that's within our power to do as a council if, with a majority direction. Is that right, City Manager?
I'll look to Dawn, but I think that's right.
I definitely think you can provide him direction. One thing we want to look at, Rob, is that you have powers that have been delegated to you under your code. But I, I can't see that those are inconsistent.
Okay, so I believe we have a viable option to give a direction, and I would like to make a motion that we rescind our, see, the, the plastic bag ban as directed by our, our city manager in his proclamation, resolution.
So just to clarify, you're not, you don't want to wait for it to determine if it's legal or not, right? You just want to do it, whether it's legal or not.
Well, with a majority vote of the council, we can direct the city manager to take an action.
Right, whether it's legal or not, right? Just want to be clear on that.
I of course, we want to, to make a legal action, right? There doesn't seem to be, in my layperson's understanding, a violation that could be in order. Yet, we do have the authority to give direction with a majority vote of council. We, we can do this at either different ways by rescinding this plastic band ban. The, the emergency order as it put in place by the city manager. Or we can just simply move forward with a, a motion.
Deputy Mayor?
I, I think you two might be talking about different things. I think Councilmember File is talking about the legality of directing the city manager. The mayor is talking about the legality of reinstituting our, our bag ban. Well, there might be a state preemption that we haven't examined completely. I think you two are talking about two different things. So just want to clarify.
And we certainly can direct the manager to do something. My concern is the legality of what we direct him to do. Councilmember Shrubnik?
I'll, I'll give a stab at, since that didn't get a second, I'll give a stab at a, at a motion. So I, I move to lift our rescinding of the plastic bag ordinance if our city attorney determines that we are not preempted by state law to do that. Second.
Deputy Mayor?
I'd just like to, is there any interest in adding amendment that there'd be some sort of 60-day notice to businesses? Okay, well, I would move that we add a 60-day notice before full implementation.
Okay, so, and I would second that also. So we have a, a motion then to amend the motion to add a 60-day ban.
Yeah, I'll second the amendment.
All right, and is there any discussion on this? Yes, Councilmember Marshall?
I am too concerned about not having the opinion of the unions and or labor at this point.
All right, so we have an amendment to the main motion, and the amendment is to add 60-day notice. Is there any further discussion on this? Clerk, please take the roll on the amendment.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Kane?
Yes.
Councilmember File?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Kugler?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
The amendment passes.
All right, so back to the main motion, and the main motion, please, Councilmember Shrubnik, if I've got this wrong, tell me to have the city manager rescind the the bag ban moratorium upon the city attorney verifying that we're not in violation by doing so. All right.
With 60 days' notice.
With 60 days' notice, right. All right, any further discussion on this? Yes, Councilmember Kugler?
I just want to make sure that that 60-day notice is to businesses as well as our residents. Because I know Deputy Mayor Herbig said businesses, but I want to make sure everyone knows.
Everybody knows, yes.
Yep.
All right. Councilmember Marshall, you have concerns about union and?
Just labor input as, in their opinion on it.
Do you want an amendment to that effect? Or do you just want it, you said it, so all is good?
Yeah, no, I don't need, need to make an amendment right now.
Okay, fine.
Thank you, though.
So the main motion then in front of us is to, upon verification by the city attorney to have the city manager rescind the, the bag, more, plastic bag moratorium with 60-day notice to the businesses and public. If there's no further discussion, will a clerk please take the roll?
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Kugler?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
No.
Councilmember File?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Kane?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Six, one. All right. Anything else, Mr. City Manager? All right. I was negligent last meeting, and I forgot to do this. So before we get too much further, I'm going to do it, and that is, because Councilmember Curtis resigned, there is a vacancy in the Eastside Transportation Partnership. And I, I think we need to fill that vacancy at this time. Is there anybody wishing to apply for that? Councilmember File?
I would be so honored to be able to apply for that position with the, the will of the council.
Councilmember Kugler?
I would also be interested in that position.
All right. Anybody else interested in that position? So we have Councilmember File?
I was going to make a recommendation with two council members of interest, possibly one would like to be an alternate.
There is that possibility, that one could be the alternate. So then let's go for the voting position first.
Do we already have an alternate for that position? I can't?
I thought we did, but I don't recall. I know that
Were, were, are, are both me and Councilmember Curtis voting members?
Yes, they were. You were, because I took over the sound transit seat, and I was voting member.
Okay.
Councilmember O'Kane?
I was just curious. Has Councilmember Kugler been appointed to any voting positions on?
He has not.
And that, that was my main question. Has council, is, what, Councilmember File, are you appointed to any voting? Councilmember File, are you appointed to any voting positions at this time?
No, I'm not. I'm currently
You were just appointed to an NLC position, correct?
I apply to an NLC position. I am on the Human Development Committee for the National League of Cities for the Federal Advocacy Committee on Policy, yes.
Right.
Thank you.
But that's not an appointment. It's a different type of
All right. So how should we do this? So the way it will have to work is the first person to four votes will get it, but we need to do it one at a time. And probably we should do it alphabetically to be fave, to be fair. So for the voting position on ETP. All those in favor of Councilmember Kugler? If you could raise your hand. Okay, we have four votes. And they were Councilmember O'Kane, Councilmember Shrubnik, Deputy Mayor and myself. All right, so that means we do have an opening position, open position in the alternate. And if there are no objections, Councilmember File will fill that position unless somebody else is interested in it. All right, Councilmember File is the alternate. Comments and reports. Let's start with Councilmember O'Kane.
I just want to thank everyone for, Council for moving forward with the lifting the bag ban that that made my night. It's good to be back tonight and I want to thank Councilmember File for bringing forward the motion initially on that. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Marshall.
I just want to thank everybody here for your dedication to public service and our debate, our interaction and our work for the public and the public comment. Thank you all.
Councilmember Kugler?
I wanted to thank the city clerk for the new preamble for the citizens' comments. I think that's a really nice addition. I also wanted to share that I've completed the essentials for elected officials, the training through the Association of Washington Cities, which is the OPMA, the PRA and knowing the legal territory. I also wanted to mention that I am meeting with the Port of Seattle Eastside Liaison for new council members. They have this orientation, just to go over the Port of Seattle's work with Eastside Cities and Kenmore. So I'm meeting with the Eastside Liaison on Wednesday.
Wonderful.
That's it. Thank you.
That's great. Councilmember Shrubnik?
Awesome. Thank you, everybody, for your your commitment and our wonderful citizens who keep us on point. And in particular, I'm, I I think we talked about at our retreat that and I don't mean to put staff on the spot, so I'll just sort of say it out. And that we would try to somehow promote how to report the orders. And I'm I'm just wondering if at at some point we could get a kind of a report back on thoughts on how to do that. I'm just, for example, looking at our website on how to report a concern and wondering whether there could be a line there or, you know, some other ways that we could help facilitate that.
Councilmember File?
Thank you, Mayor Baker. You know, I just want to thank everybody for your time tonight. We discussed a lot of interesting topics, of course, and as always, it's another great meeting. I'm very happy to to serve and work with my fellow colleagues. And I look forward to our next meeting.
Just so you both know, Councilmember Kugler and Councilmember File, the next ETP meeting is February sixteenth. That's a Tuesday. At I believe eight thirty in the morning. Eight thirty to ten. And they're having joint meetings now, so all three transportation forums will meet. And then you'll break out into your own respective forum and then I believe you come back together at the end. So anyway, Deputy Mayor.
Nothing bad. Good meeting. Happy to be done before nine.
Yes, indeed. That is, that is exciting. I continue to meet with legislators on on the the Clean Air Bill that Representative Palet has sponsored. We're now down to the point where Representative Palet is meeting, going to meet with Representative Dye and try to work through some of the differences. I know there is concern that it's going to have far reaching effects to the other side of the state for feedlots and all sorts of other industries and I know there is no move to limit the law to this side of the mountains. So it's going to be interesting to see how this, how this progresses, but it is moving. So if there is no further business to come in front of us, our next meeting is February eighth at seven PM. And the February sixteenth meeting is is tentatively canceled. So with that, we stand adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Night, everyone.